Good morning poker people alright so starting up day 12 today of our 28 day um uh 28 days of poker study. So with day 12 today we're just doing two things we're gonna do a a hand reading practice like we always do every day. And then we'll get to some game tape review of a session that I played on ACR uh two days ago on the 11th. So we'll just dive right in. So let's see here we've got um you could see right now I started off uh doing really good eight big blinds per 100. But over the past uh what 12 days so far it's been a little bit of a downswing lost 60 ish 70 ish dollars. I think I can't remember the dollar amount we started with but down a little bit but hey you know I'll make it back guaranteed. Um just a little downswing but it happens over was it for over like 2,000 2,500 hands or so downswing which isn't bad. I mean everybody people hit that all the time so let's go to more filters right here seeing some showdown hands. Ace 10 suited was the prior hand that we did um. What's in the big blind? Ace 10 suited right here okay so king nine. 697 we have a bet check call and a check call okay this will be this might be a pretty interesting hand to review. Part of the review today is we are going to be using this now this is split suits hand reading um for opponent ranges. And what it is is he you know splits you created a whole hand reading lab that's where I learned. Most of my hand reading skills from his hand reading lab he also put out a workbook a poker workbook um like a year later after the hand reading lab. It probably came out three months ago or so uh four months and in that book he gave I think 28 or 30 hand reading exercises. And he gave these different forms to use to help you keep track and so that you can go over these hands again in the future. Um you can get these forms for yourself by simply going to uh splitsuits or splitsuit.com slash templates. Once you go there it'll take you to his gum load uh sales page and then you can pay what you want you can get this for zero dollars and he's fine with that you know. But I paid $10 for it uh just just to support splitsuit you know so you can get these for yourself and what they are they're PDFs that come out editable PDFs you know. So you can simply just uh you know enter in the dates enter in the ranges and all that stuff so that you have for uh uh for you to review in the future. What I'm gonna start doing is uh well I'm gonna record all this information I'll save it and I'll uh send it out to. Uh I'll send it out to you at the end of the week along with the hand details so. Um I think it's called yeah hand details I guess we could say uh yeah view hand detail so I'll send you out this sheet along with all of this right here. So you can use uh hmm so you can review on your own how I go about hand reading from pre flop ranges. And then narrowing the streets or narrowing the range through the streets. Alrighty here. So first off hand number. Alright maybe I can't really copy that. I guess I could just type it in yeah this is my first time really using the sheet um yeah it is come on. The date on this hand is. 219. Great so the notes this note section is where you put notes on your opponent um it's normally notes so just what you know about them how aggressive they are how passive they are. Why you put them on the range that you did pre flop uh and then why you narrow them the way you did uh street by street after that. Okay so we are in the big blind and I'm good with the raise right here the guy is a nitty player in general uh only 13 hands. Let's see what happens we raise and he calls so. Nitty player unknown at 15 hands. To bet calling range from BB is. Let's see what kind of calling range do we want to put him on we've got the king nine of hearts over here and he has. Alrighty let's put him on definitely a tighter range because he's unknown and he's showing us uh that he's tighter. I'm thinking ace queen suited will probably be three betting in most instances ace king or ace queen off. Let's put those in let's give him a couple other um suited Broadway stuff. Um I think often players will call those to one bet unknown players we'll see uh. And then all of these let's say he's three betting the jacks. Um so far 14% total calling. And 50% in the big blind one out of two I mean that's hard to tell so let's actually let's do this let's give him slightly wider range I don't want to narrow him that far. Because it is only 15 hands 65 king nine okay we could say this he's three betting those three betting down through the jacks. Calling through the tens because he's unknown and we're unknown to him as well so let's stick with this range. Are a uh king nine suited versus this has 45% equity so there's quite a few every king beats us but we're ahead of the queens and all the suited connectors. Uh all these kings beat us as well all these pocket pairs currently beat us but to most of them the eights and below we have two over cards to it. So if we hit a pair we're ahead of his range for sure let's just try a random 10 whatever 1045. Uh 45% oh. 28% oh not 10 I meant nine oh can't have a nine of hearts nine of clubs okay 74% equity so it's pretty darn good right there. Uh so but that's just on a random flop let's see what the actual flop is so we're out of position going to the flop oh. Before we do that we want to copy this range. And their pre flop range. Right here as a percentage form that range let's take this off is 17.6% so king nine of hearts. 17.6%. Computer's acting a little slow today uh we're back to this hand. Don't know what happened my uh my computer had a brain fart oh well so anyway so we um we put our opponent on a 17.6 200. Let's take those off what was it 234 combos before our cards become blockers there. 234 combos 17.6% range okay so on a 697 flop. Uh oh before that comes out yeah we have 46% not too bad we are out of position which isn't good of course but we have some decent equity. So let's see what happens uh 697 diamond spade club. So we've got the top pair um so like I said before if we hit that if we hit a pair we are ahead of a bit of his range. He does have some sets in his range three different sets of course uh uh which is 3.5% of his overall range right there. But we're ahead 67% of the time which is pretty good so let's see what we do. We make the 95 cent raise right here. Hmm 60 roughly 67% or so and then he just called so what is he just calling us with in position right here? Uh remember he doesn't know anything about us we raised him pre flop but small blind opens uh can be quite wide they can be just as wide as a button range. So we don't necessarily hit this flop and we don't necessarily have an over pair every time lots of over cards in our range actually so let's see. Uh he doesn't have any straights sets right here definitely just calling to get some value from us although it's kind of a wet board. There's no flush draw out there it doesn't look super scary to most sets they're not going to be scared at all. Uh two pairs as well what does he have oh 76 yeah that's just calling one street maybe getting active on the next street. Over pairs uh the pocket tens yeah it's not necessarily a good time for him to be raising just yet because in my range of course are better pairs than him. Uh he could be doing that but as we can see from his stats he's a little tight in general so far only 13 hands so let's say those are calling. Pocket pair below top pocket eights are definitely calling with their open ender plus their pair power uh middle pair. 87. And ace seven I think those can both call one street at least weak pairs now those are all the sixes um and then the pocket pairs below hmm. Fives would fives call fives might call but let's definitely take out just one street because it's a pair plus a gutter. You know the fives might call the 65 and the a6 may call one street right there but those pocket fives have a gut shot they just need an eight they might be doing that. Um because we really don't have many tens in our range with ace 10 king 10 queen 10 jack 10 10 9. Pocket tens actually we do have quite a bit of 10 so if an eight does come we do beat him with a lot of our range but so but we'll give him at least one street of calling right here. Uh so that's we filter that a little bit ace high let's say those are folding no made hands are folding um. Open and straight draws are calling gut shots what are they oh they're all the over well. The fives as well but we already have those in the weak pairs but let's say those gut shots because they are over cards as well as uh can make a nut hand because they're all the the high. Um you know with all the tens and everything if an eight comes the 10 has the higher straight over a five over cards in general um. Let's not keep the over cards in but let's go ahead and keep the two card backdoor flushes in but let's remove some of the weaker ones here. As flush draws you know. Now let's keep the king 10 in. This is just just to remove some right there so Q2 card okay so he is continuing with his range 62.8% of the time. Uh 125 combos right here so we'll save this range. Percent of previous range was 62.8% of his previous range and the combos were. Wrong one oh. There we go and the combos were 125 great so we were able to take out um. A 37.2% of his range which is pretty good right there I like that narrowing of the range. Go back to the hand so the 10 comes right there making those pocket eights given that a straight um given an ace eight given the 68 and no no he didn't have 68. 78 in his range and 98 gave those straights uh right there because those are in his range for sure uh 10 9. Why do we take 10 9 out of his range from before? 10 9 was a top pair hand. Well we'll see I must have removed it with. How did that get removed? Interesting well I removed it with the two card backdoor draw but I don't want to because that's a top pair hand. So how about this how about we just go back to this? Keep those in because they are all uh backdoor flushes with over cards or with a pair. Let's go ahead and just keep that whole range in right there because I definitely want to keep the 10 9 suited in his range. All of these right here because they all hit this board with something really good something worth continuing especially worth continuing in position cannot be taken those out. So 133 combos 66.8 instead. Okay cool so the 10 9 is still in good good good. So he calls the turn comes the 10 of clubs right here so our hand went down big time to 34% equity you saw before we were at 60. 50 or 60% equity now the 10 of clubs comes uh hit a lot of his draws complete right there which is pretty darn ugly for us for sure. So let's see what happens we do not like that card at all so we check which you know I'm good with the check there. We get a we get a bet now it is hmm was it dollar 70 is half pot little over half pot maybe 55% give or take of the pot right here. And then so we decided to just call great but before we call let's take a look at what he's betting with right here um. He's betting his straights to get value betting his sets to get value two pair over pair top pair is he betting middle pairs here or is he happy just getting a showdown? I could I would say that he could bet just because we showed weakness on the turn. Uh he doesn't want to see a king or a queen come in case we have that as an over card he doesn't want to see an eight come so that a a jack. Like a random ace jack king jack that we may have hits a straight um so he could be betting the middle pair little over half pot just to blow us off the hand I would say. It's totally possible it's the kind of thing I would do in position versus a versus somebody who checked the turn after making a c bet. Cause my my strength here my hand doesn't look strong at all I just told him that I basically have a pair and I'm scared of the straight draw uh on the board the forward of the straight. So he could be betting with a ton of stuff all these weaker pairs he's betting right here uh the ace highs I'm not gonna say ace highs are betting no made hand no. Flush draws flush draws could definitely be be betting he hit a little bit of equity right there by catching the flush draw and a lot of those are ace highs. And even the 98 and the 65 have a pair with a flush draw totally betting totally betting uh I'm not gonna say no flush draws are always betting they could. But I'm not gonna say that they are because we have all these other kind of weaker hands in the betting range uh even these ace highs. Nah ace highs could be concerned that they're just hmm. Let's leave them out of the range leave them out um open and it's straight draw king jack queen jack oh definitely. Uh gut shots let's say those are betting over cards nah. So now we um 105 out of the 14 hands so really he's staying in with 92% he's betting with 92% of his range right here. 92%. 105 so like I said previously um. Uh I can't remember yesterday or the day beforehand um our passivity doesn't. Narrow opponents range all that much we just gotta follow here. I apologize I did not see the name in time. But thank you very much for following I didn't see your name I'm gonna type that in actually. Cool oh there's the name right there. Noli Noli 97 sweet thank you very much so our passivity does not narrow the opponent's range all that much if we would come out firing with a double barrel. Maybe a 67% range even his call would tell us a lot more than our check and his bet. Because his bet could just be taking advantage of our passivity with almost 100% of his range just to blow us off the pot. So that's something to remember when your hand reading you'll start to realize that more passive play does not limit your opponent's range. There we go there's their turn range so we've taken him down from 234 combos pre to 105 now. Uh let's see what happens on the river okay the nine comes right there so it gives us trips which is nice but there's three to the flush. Which we had him staying in with all of his backdoor draws before so it's possible he got there um there's also some backdoor uh straight flush draws as well which is interesting. Um there's also four to the straight on the board um. 78 jack actually has a higher straight than just the 10 high so there's a lot of hands that we are in danger of right here so we decide to check. And let him bet and it will probably call just about anything if he bets closer to like three quarter to a pot size bet I might. Realize I'm beat and get out of there but we'll see what he does 650 what is that? Uh wow way more than three quarter pot 88% of the pot he's betting this guy likes his hand I really think it's time to fold. Um he stayed in with so many draws that the turn and the river completed and we we didn't eliminate any of those draws from his range uh from his flop range. So I think we misplayed this hand by not double barreling for sure. Or possibly just betting in the first place and we could have just check and then called a bet and then when he fired again on the turn folded the turn because that board is just so ugly. And uh we just don't have don't have anything good right here so I of course call but before we get to the call what do we think he's betting? Before we get there to see if my call is warranted or not if he's betting enough uh with hands or just weaker pair hands. Um if he's betting enough of those then uh then then the call is warranted it's justified so his straights are betting for sure oh uh nine of clubs. So the straights no quads would be betting but no full houses are betting flushes are betting straights are betting three of a kind is betting he only has one three of a kind. Uh with the ace and oh yeah okay gotcha because everything else is a full house there's no sets available over pairs top pair are top pairs betting all those tens um. Probably not that's two streets and he upped the bet sizing big time so we saw originally it was um. $2 into 340 so whoops $2 into $3.40 okay. His first bet on the turn was 59% of the pot his second bet was 86% or whatever. 88% of the pot he likes his hand he's going for value he is not betting that much with top pair or weak pair or ace height or anything so um. We've narrowed his range down to 35 hands if this is what he's betting again right there we are a 0% we should not be calling no matter what. The only thing that we could be doing is uh over shoving like check shoving as a bluff we should be folding this 100% of the time. But we totally screwed it by calling and he has 65 suited for the clubs which we put in his range it is uh on the flop it was. Uh pair plus a plus a gutter which makes sense to call plus the backdoor draw he picked up a little bit of equity so he bet a small amount with the 65. And actually it was a a gut shot straight flush draw that he had um. Oh thank you very much Al I see that right there. Uh Al for those of you watching after the fact Al in the comments said uh you know he called me Mr Marathon man doing all these study sessions in a row. Thank you Al I appreciate it um Al Spath from uh Positive Poker Insiders. So um yeah so it makes total sense him calling the flop I mean everybody would call the flop in this instance right here uh. And on the turn of course he bet because he picked up equity and on the river of course he bet big because he doesn't put us on a flush uh I mean I guess we could have played the way we did with. I don't know a random ace X of clubs um ace king ace queen but why would we play the turn so passively when we picked up equity? He knew he had the best hand and he bet for max value and uh I was fool enough to call you know it was a terrible call on my part but you know. It happens I'm not happy with it of course um so let me see here 34.3% and 35 hands. River range. What's wrong with should have? Yep yep should have realized how strong his hand was yeah increasing bet sizing big time from turn to river and then there's his river range so. We took him down from 234 combos pre flop all the way down to 35 which is. What do you okay. What is happening? 35 divided by 234 okay so we removed 85 combos from 85% of his range um we kept in only 15% and we were accurate in our read. And this kind of work is definitely well it should translate to our in-game play as we realize you know as we pay attention to this stuff more we take. Uh as we're playing we're able to assign a range in our head of their pre flop range and then based on their actions through the streets narrowing that range. So you could see off the felt we do a pretty good job putting them on the range it's just now the whole process of taking that off the felt work. Putting it to my on the felt play as well as making good decisions based on that because looking at this here we ranged him properly his hand was in the range the whole way. His calling range pre flop his hand was actually at the bottom of his calling range right there uh but it makes total sense giving him this range. And uh by the end we definitely should have folded so screwed the pooch on that hand for sure gave up a ton of value with a weak king. With a weak uh top pair on the flop yep yep so I'll save that for later and I'll send that out along with the uh notes for everybody along with the hand details. So now what did our agenda say here? Of course was game tape review so once a week at least I record game tape and game tape I've talked about it before. Is where I'm speaking through my decisions as I'm playing and by doing this I'm able to really articulate why. Or the goal is to articulate why I'm making my decisions so when I review the game tape labor later I can look for leaps in logic or mistaken. Mistaken actions mistaken thinking things like that um and then just working on your game this way really does make you a stronger player it's like. All the football teams that watch game tape of themselves or their opponents or uh you know tennis players or anybody um stand-up comedians who watch them watch. Footage of themselves to see their mannerisms and actions and the way they say things on stage in order to help them better their performance. That's what game tape is game tape is helping me to better my performance the next time I play a session so. Uh oh right here king. Great 7 out of 10 so far so uh currently my game tape is being uploaded to YouTube this uh this exact one right here. This is gonna be the link but I'll send it out in today's email so that you can all click on this because I don't think we're gonna have time to watch the full video. Uh it's an hour long video we'll probably get through 20 minutes of it or so with me pausing and then discussing my thoughts or opinions on what I'm saying in the game tape. I have a note here for mistakes made so I'll be keeping track of any mistakes I make and any action steps for things I need to do that I know that I need to work on or. Uh well basically actions that I need to take for the next time I play. So let's get started this was from 411 two days ago.
Alrighty got a little game tape going on today I'm not gonna be streaming this just recording game tapes so that we can review review in tomorrow's.
If you can't hear this those of you in the study session uh or in the twitch stream let me know but I think you should be able to hear it.
First table unknown loose aggressive loose aggressive loose aggressive hmm loose aggressive getting there. Maybe kind of almost on the tag tight aggressive but getting up to loose aggressive here too so this table. Doesn't look like the greatest of tables to be at but we're just gonna try to play nice aggressive poker um three bet when necessary four bet if necessary. Um calling in position with some good hands um and then be looking at stats and everything of course ace queen off we are raising. Excuse me uh ace queen off raising as a steal so we get a call from the small blind he is an unknown but we can put him on quite the large calling range. Got my cheat uh cheat sheet right here.
Actually have that always with me next to me.
Using this as long as well as my kiss cash game focus and you could see down here I am focused on how often you know take a note. Of how often I play something passively or aggressively so I made an aggressive play. Right here let's up the sizing 396 isn't the easiest of flops for these two calling um uh calling ranges to hit. It's possible though there's plenty of middle cards plenty of pocket pairs that are gonna continue to this right here sevens and eights fives might even continue um 10 9 9 jack. Uh 8 jack 10 jack or 10 jack 10 8 will continue as well oh and then we get a check raise right here it's a full 4x check raise. So I did a little bit whoops wrong button did a little bit more aggression right there but I am folding to this um I have absolutely nothing it was just a s- a c bet bluff. I don't know anything about him maybe he likes to uh uh maybe he's a a a check raise bluffer you know we'll have to see there. But that's the first check raise so if you look at fold the c bet check raise uh right here 100% of the time one out of one so we'll get to see. Uh as the hands go on how he uh shift those biscuits how he approaches. Uh post swap play. So like I said every time I make a call um uh yeah I'm not gonna consider checking as a passive play uh actually no I will I might as well. Cause my options of course are to bet or to raise check or call folding isn't so passive I'm gonna count this today. Checking calling and of course aggressive is betting raising.
Yeah so this thing I'm doing down here I don't know if I necessarily explained it this. Yeah, so this thing I'm doing down here, I don't know if I necessarily explained it, this is a tick sheet. Okay, hold on one second, Dom, this is a tick sheet right here that as I'm playing, if I'm working on a specific actually, whatever I'm working on specifically, I create a tick sheet as I'm playing and normally it's on paper, I make little ticks, you know, the one, two, three, four and then the line across, that's my tick sheet on here, because I wanna show you what I'm doing, I put the Xs down. But basically, right now, I'm working on my passive game versus my um versus my aggressive game, or I should say, I'm trying to just be more aggressive in my games, I found that I'm a big time loser when I'm just calling with draws too much or calling with weak pairs or top pairs like we just saw um in that hand reading exercise, calling the turn in the river with that weaker pair, just shouldn't have done that, should've just given up on the turn right there. Um or at least on the river, should've given up with the way I played that hand, or I should've been aggressive on the turn, well, those are the stuff, those are the things that I'm working on right now, and because I'm working on it, I'm creating it, um it's as a tick sheet right there. So Dom asked me to turn up the volume. I'm not sure if this is how we do it, Dom, but let's see how it works.
Alright, good, good.
I think I turned up the volume, Dom, let me know if it sounds better once I start talking.
Got some good sized stacks on this takeout table, Parker is a loose aggressive player, um a reg, see him all the time. Nitro Fish, I'm pretty sure I have a a good amount of hands on Nitro Fish, the name's familiar. Altos, I think I started playing with Altos yesterday, Ice Bank myself is a good player, a definite reg and definitely able to use that aggression to their advantage. Now, ten jack offsuit is just not a hand that I wanna call here, I'm folding no matter what, don't like it, ten jack suited, I would've called. Nine eight suited and eight seven suited are three bet bluffing hands and um let's see, the stats aren't up yet on Altos. They should be popping up on the table soon, but uh yeah, I think Altos is a pretty loose aggressive player who is capable in middle position of opening wide. So I could have uh if I if I did had a better hand in the big blind right there, I could have uh three bet re-bluffed him off.
Thank you very much, Dom, live volume is better, so that is better, live volume is better, let me do this, let me just turn it up more than.
Now, if I recall correctly, Ice Bank does not like to fold. Well, there you go, now he has a value hand, he's and he probably knows that Nitro Fish is capable of three bet uh bluffing from the blinds. Let's see if we get some action, just eating the popcorn, watching the hand play out, uh he's folding, yeah, whatever. Six seven off, I'm not gonna steal here, so Nitro Fish, eighty-one hands only, yeah, loose aggressive, let me see here. Three betting from the big blind, twenty-one percent, so he likes to three bet bluff when he has that one big blind discount. Out there, no, not defending against Parker. I already know ahead of time, I am not even gonna try to bluff right here with this hand. It's taking you so long right there, not gonna open steal.
So six seven offsuit is a hand that many people would open and steal with right there. But um it just, it's not a hand that that I like to play, six seven suited for sure would be opening, five six suited as well. But six seven offsuit is just so weak, I've looked at my hands, filtered for um offsuit connectors and really, they're just, they're losing hands in general, they just, they're really hard to hit, and then when you do hit something strong, great, you can get value, but most of the time, you're whiffing with those hands. So if you play a lot of offsuit connectors, filter for that in Poker Tracker Four to see how well you really do.
Lots of players would, lots of those loose aggressive players, but uh don't wanna. Jack seven, not gonna steal, no. I am a tighter player by nature, I can get aggressive when the situation warrants it, when it feels like it warrants it, um especially after hand reading my opponents and and if I determine that they have a weak, you know, weekend on the flop, turn a river or pre-flop if they're weak and likely three betting wide, that kind of a thing. Um but I don't like to just open one hundred percent of hands like some people do from the cutoff in the button. Like we could take a look at Ice Bank right here, his uh he's opening from the button fifty percent of the time. Which is twenty-three out of forty-six instances, exactly fifty, and look at that cutoff is thirty-eight percent of the time, so. But he's possibly, maybe he ma- maybe he's uh able to turn those into profitable. Uh maybe he's able to be profitable with those post-flop, not sure.
Yep, so things are looking a little slow right now, not being dealt a lot of hands to be playing.
Played a lot with him yesterday and he is a, seems to be a competent reg, see him at a lot of tables, okay, good, pocket knives right here. Forest, well, definitely opening. Don't wanna face a three bet by anybody, but depending on who three bets, I may just call, I may come over the top with a four bet. Especially versus um Alibaba, let's see, what can you do here, three bet out of small blind seventeen percent. Just one dollar, huh? Cheap three bet, now I could call just to set mine, cost me only a dollar, I need twenty bucks behind, which I have. Um I could also four bet, but I just do not know enough about this player, about how they, about how they uh you know, so I got aggressive with the open and I'm probably just gonna call this one right here, let's see what Forest does. Yeah, don't wanna build a pot out of position versus this guy, I wanna see what they do, yeah, let's go, let's play this one passively right here. Now, king, queen, nine, what a shame, lots of ace, king, lots of aces, lots of broadways in that range, um pocket kings, pocket queens, of course, cuz it was a small three bet, trying to get value out of me quite possibly. Uh one twenty-two, so that was a check that was playing passive right there and only a one-third pot bet, but I don't have much of anything, I could come over the top with a raise, but I'm not gonna do it. I called basically just to set mine in a three bet pot with enough stacks behind and it just didn't work out.
Yes, I'm good, I'm still good looking at that now, I'm good with that reasoning, uh when I just don't know enough about the player and he's showing quite a big uh he's very passive right here, I can expect calls most of the time versus my open, but he gets the min three bet. He had a good hand right there, I would, I would assume most of the time it's that way, most people, um when they're bluff three betting, they're bidding it bigger, but they're bidding three X or three point five or four X if they're out of position, and they're doing that because they want me to fold. Those smaller three bets in general are guys who want you to come in, they want you to come over the top with a four bet, so they can five bet or just call and get it in on the flop, whatever their plan is, but oftentimes, it is a sucker bet.
So, let's add some chips to this table right here. Let's see who we got watching today, Danster, Dom, Great White, Mook, Bang Bella, Muk Bang Bella. Posse's watching, TRZ and Zinstrus, thank you very much, everybody for joining today, I appreciate it.
So sometimes when you're watching game tape.
Folded a good amount of steals, two steals.
Things can be a little bit boring, but.
Nitro Fish though does like to three bet from the small blind eighty or eight percent, twenty percent from the big blind.
But the thing about game tape is um what you should be doing as you're doing game tape is speaking through all of your thoughts, this is for your own review. I'm just putting it out there so you guys can see the kinds of things I think about and speak uh speak about as I'm doing game tape. Um normally, this kind of stuff is meant just to be uh just to be watched on your own. Uh so it can be boring at times, but the goal is to constantly think about the opponents of the tables, to constantly look at their stats and to make decisions and to make assumptions based on those stats, and the game tape records those so you can hear them back to you, back for yourself. And then possibly you can catch some terrible leaps in logic that you make or just some mistakes in logic or catch things that you missed. Uh if you catch things you missed and mistakes you made, you'll be all the better for it in the next session you play.
Twenty percent four betting so far, let's see if we see some hands that um
Right down there, four bit range.
Forest right here from Forest, so we've seen it once, attempted steal then four bet with pocket fours. Hmm, so Forest could be a four bet bluffer, definitely.
Absolutely, he is. And I think we see that as we uh as we get into this game tape and see more hands with Forest.
Got my uh green smoothie, it's red because of the beats, good stuff. I'll back away from the microphone, I'm drinking. Good size bet on the turn, so you got an ace you're trying to get value out of, uh oh, maybe not, just trying to throw a big bluff out there. And Nitro Fish came in for the check raise on the turn, fold to C bet. Racy, oh, I guess maybe it wasn't uh oh no, out of position right here, check raise fifty percent on the turn, definitely gonna steal with the ace five suited, so let's take a look here. Uh can expect a call sometimes, three bets as well, Ice Bank myself can three bet, I believe, from the small blind, yeah, yeah. Hmm, just a call, he wants to see a flop, doesn't wanna try to push me off right here. Now, king eight six, one up and two in the middle right here, uh this hits calling ranges really well. If we think about Ice Bank myself's calling, he is calling, uh let's see here, call two bet from the small blind only three percent of the time. So he has a ton of pocket pairs, I am gonna make the C bet bluff here, um he has a lot of pocket pairs that could've hit some sets. Could hit, uh he could have uh what is it, nine, sevens and fives that wanna call and continue. He checked pretty quickly behind, but he did time down on this check, so it's possible he has a hand that he likes and is trying to slow play it. Um and he checked pretty quickly after he did, and a call right there, okay, um so I have complete air, I was just C bet bluffing. Right there, um the bad thing was, of course, I'm in position, which is good, uh but the bad thing is, it was against two players and then now he comes out with a hmm, over half pot bet, and he typed that in specifically, I think he has a good hand, he's trying to get value here, so I'm folding. I can't bluff him off of any king, any two hearts he's gonna continue with, yep. Let's open, suited ace, I can expect a three bet here occasionally from Parker and from Alibaba as well.
I said suited, but it's obviously off suit ace.
I need to fold every time, you know. Ace five isn't a great hand to, oh, just checking here, against Vina, I don't know anything about you. I'm fine with checking behind, I don't wanna build a pot with a seven, six offsuit, out of position.
So you can see sometimes I am making plays and checking and raising and not keeping track of it down here. Uh sometimes it just, you know, you just kind of forget that this is here. But I believe later in the game tape, you'll see be, you'll see me making a lot of marks cuz I realize I've been missing it.
Throw a half pot bet out there, hmm, you call, so you could easily have a spade, I have absolutely nothing, no spades, I'm gonna give it up. And yeah, you hit your spade flush, so be it. Uh nine deuce, uh he opens, so my hand isn't great, I definitely don't wanna call, do I wanna three bet? He opens early position twenty percent of the time, but he does not like to fold to three bets, um so I'm not gonna do it, not gonna steal, just give it up.
Yep.
I someone to call? Oh, what's going on here? Everyone's leaving, hmm. Well, definitely wanna open, but why is everyone leaving, I'll still doubt the big blind too and get out of here next. Throw out the bluff C bet. I raised pre, if he doesn't have an ace, there's not many hands that he'd wanna stay in with, not many draws. Um all those middle cards and stuff didn't hit anything at all, so.
So you see right there, I should've made two marks on my aggressive line.
I don't really wanna play a table with Moose Gills in position on me, but I'll stay in for a little bit longer. We'll see if um see if uh some other players come in as well as check in a fold eighty-one, fold forty-four, no, not gonna do that one there, um we'll see if any new players come in here, see what happens, and I'm on the waitlist for a few other tables, so hopefully one of them comes up soon. And I'm able to, might be able to get on a better table than this one here. Eight six suited, definitely gonna open. Onto bootin'. But I won't uh do a call or defend here, not with the eight six suited.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, king jack on the cutoff, I would've opened.
Like I just said, is a cutoff open, not an MP open for me.
Unknown guy, got a new player coming in soon, lovely. It's okay, Kona. Kona, it's alright, girl, there's nothing out there, maybe it's a cat. Uh versus this guy, this guy likes to open right here. EP zero so far, but lots of opening in all the other positions, um I'm not gonna defend.
But actually, that's more of a cutoff open cuz these guys were sitting out, I was the button, he was the cutoff, even though he was first to act. So you can put him on a really wide range right there.
King, queen, okay, that's worth doing some defending with, definitely gonna call versus you. But we'll see if we face a three bet or something. I'm just gonna call, planning on that one right there, that passive play.
I got back to that.
Seven three seven is a pretty tough flop to hit, he C bets quite a bit. I could C bet and then check raise bluff, or not C bet, I'm sorry, check raise bluff right here, um oh, and he decided not to bet, so gonna go up for some, uh not betting as a bluff, but for value for sure, just trying to get value. Possibly hmm, anything that doesn't believe I hit a king, maybe an ace X kind of a hand that wants to stay in and try to hit an ace or thinks I didn't have the, have a king and his ace high is best. Um sevens, of course, are gonna call a raise right here and get value out of me, a three, hmm, a three might stay in. And then, of course, all the different middle pairs from eights up through the queens would've C bet the flop, so uh I wasn't getting called by any pair better than the sevens on the board, I would say. I could've been called by a lot of kings as well, king ten, king nine, all that stuff too, so there was plenty of that kind of stuff, um he does not like to fold, but I do have a suited king. So I'm gonna open it up and I think he can defend with a really wide range, he can defend with a ton of queens, jacks. Um a ton of pairs that are under the king, so if I hit my king pair, he's not defending here with tens or queens, so I'm not up against a set. I could be up against two pair, queen ten, that kind of thing is possible, but I think I got a.
So when I said there, he's not defending with queens or tens, of course, he's defending with queens or tens, but he's defending as a three bet. Not just calling my open raise with pocket queens or pocket tens is what I meant right there.
Bet here, it's a pretty wet board and I do want to get value out of all the spade draws, out of all the queen X and ten X hands that he could be holding in that instance. So got aggressive, got aggressive up here with the queens. Alibaba calls, uh what is Alibaba's button calling, oh, good, nice, so who is this, Forest? Forest's three bet range from the small blind is really big, but I don't wanna call and give him really good odds, I'd rather call and make him pay more and then make you pay more as well, so.
I just said I don't wanna call and then I said I'd rather call, what I meant was, you know, my mouth doesn't keep up with my brain sometimes, I don't wanna call, but I do want to raise right here, is what I meant.
Two and a half would be six fifty plus a dollar, seven bucks, seven point five. Definitely, and against this player with how loose aggressive they are, I'm getting it in here, if they shove, I'm calling, cuz he can easily be shoving with ace, king. Maybe not ace queen, but ace, king, pocket jacks and tens, he could be doing it with as well, so I was not gonna let him uh I was not just gonna call right there, no, no, no. Oh, so I would say that's more aggression right there, bet for bet.
This is the kind of hand, in the past, I would call, but just because it's a big king, but no, not anymore.
His C bet stats are pretty. His C bet stats are pretty good, so. Random. He is, I mean, he should be C betting a little bit more. Maybe he does so. Let's take a look. Maybe he C bets a lot. Come on, pop up, pop up. Maybe he C bets a lot in position. Okay, just so this makes sense. Um, out of position, he C bets twenty-two percent, so he is super.
So I was paying attention up here to this hand and I didn't see this hand. This player Phenom was capable of getting it in with queen, jack off suit. Um, he was a short stacker. I think it was only a forty big blind. I think he only had ten dollars forty big blind in a stack and that's something worth noting, so. Phenom, if I ever see Phenom again, uh, you know, hopefully I'll remember that Phenom is capable of getting it in as a short stack with a crap hand. Probably as a bluff, of course, you know, hoping the opponent would fold, but Altos, Altosa had a pocket jacks and, and of course called, so. That's the kind of thing that, you know, when you're watching game tape, you're obviously paying attention to one thing and you miss important stuff on other tables, so. If I would have seen that, I would have taken a note on that, uh, and possibly taken a note depending on the bet sizing with the pocket jacks. He might have, uh, uh, made a bigger bet sizing because he wanted to fold as opposed to bet sizing smaller with aces or kings, uh, that kind of thing, so. That would be another note possibly worth making.
Honest out of position, and this is great to pay attention to and notice, so, um, if I can, of course, call on the button, call on the cutoff when he opens in an earlier position. Just get to the flop and see how he responds on the flop. Um. And then see how he responds on the flop. Now, five, four suited is the kind of hand that can flop something really well, but it's fifty cents. Oh, like I just said. I'm in position right here. Let's try that play.
So I was just now talking about Moose Gills looking at his stats. He is C bet, he's very C bet honest when it comes to out of position play. Uh, which I noticed he was like seventy percent C betting in position and like twenty-two percent out of position. So I just now noticed that on this table about, again, about Moose Gills and then over here, Moose Gills again, I have an opportunity to call in position. And then we could put that read to the test and see if I can take advantage of it here.
Good morning, Mason. Do you want to blanket? Here.
Six fifteen, my son wakes up to play video games.
Oh, well, let's see what he can do or let's see what he does being out of position post flop. If he C bets, I'm just gonna fold, um, and since he did not C bet, I'm just gonna throw out the two thirds pop bit right here. Plan on doing the steal. Hey, cool. We looked at it just now on this hand and then Bam was able to take advantage of it down here on this hand. I love it. Today's smoothie is not so good. Uh, no avocado in the house, so I couldn't do that. The fruit that I put in strawberries and. Boisin berries are a little, um, on the tartar side. I did add garlic to it and that kind of doesn't help with the flavor either, but it helps with the health, I guess. And, um, you know. Yep. Now, this is worth a steal, faux show, folds a hundred percent, folds seventy-six. I can expect my, um, steel to go, get through quite a bit. Um, against these two and it didn't, but okay, he is an unknown, just like his name says. Uh, but on that six, six, three or six, three, three board is really tough to hit. He could have plenty of middle pair, sevens, eights, nines, and tens that he just called. Because I don't know him, he doesn't know me. Um, he could have just called that stuff, but. Whatever. Um, in the cutoff right here, I'm not a fan of the ace five offsuit. That's just a little bit too weak of an ace to be calling. Oh, well. And somebody came in. Another table. Let's take a look at this table, see what we got going on here. Um. Ice Bank has position Parker with position on me, so two good players with position on me. I am not a fan of this table. I am bugging out.
Also, that table had Jebriel, who's a tag player. Um, I'm here, he was over here and then another player called, uh. I can't remember just now, but he's another player whose name I recognize, so that table had one, two, three, four regs at it with one unknown. It's, it's not worth playing at. Um, just like this table's almost not worth playing at either, but, uh, I just, I just stuck with it because, because I've, I had a good read on my opponents and I wanted to play two tables, so. That's why I was on the waitlist for other tables, hopefully to catch a good table.
Okay, I have relative position on Parker. Not great position, but I've got him here. Ice Bank, was this Ice Bank? Yep. Ice Bank, uh, exact opposites on the table, so fifty fifty position, out of position on him. Ace king is a no brainer open. Of course, I'm not gonna limp and I'm not gonna fold, so you just kind of hope to hit a, hit a pair or anything like that. Um, on the nine, three, four, he folds the C bets one hundred percent of the time out of position. Oh, not at all yet, so let's throw out that C bet right there. He defended. Not many hands are gonna be happy on this flop, other than a couple of diamonds, um, a sets, of course, are happy. Um, and I can't see him just calling with tens or jacks, so he would have three bet and over pair on that nine high board. Couple of times Bam Bam aggressive, open and then C bet. Um, I've probably played a few more passively, but I haven't been checking that every time, so I'll make sure to do that. Uh, ooh, Zap, don't know anything about Zap. If I call the sixty-five right here, um, there's gonna be two fifty in the pot. With his fifty, that's a three dollar pot because he's most likely calling, but, um.
I'm glad I folded that. Just yesterday in the study session yesterday, if you guys watched it, you saw how I'm a massive loser by calling with the suited biggies like that. Queen, seven, king, six, ace, uh, ace, four, ace, nine suited, stuff like that. That looks pretty and can flop really well, but in general, I'm just a big loser with those hands, so I'm glad I folded that right there. Just imagine if I had called, I am purposely calling with a queen, seven suited, out of position versus if he called one, two, three other players. It's just a losing situation. I have to hit a miracle trip, sevens, trip, queens, uh, a miracle flush on the flop or turn it, that kind of a thing. It's just really not worth playing. If I hit just a seven, if I hit just a queen, it's, it's a terrible hand. How do I get value? I'm probably gonna be giving value for the most part, playing out of position with a crap hand, not worth it.
Queen, seven is just not a strong enough hand to call, so just ditching it. We'll watch one more rotation here of the button is what we'll get through. So when I get to the big blind next, we'll end this video. As we're already at it for over an hour. Not gonna steal. Hmm, no open. Jebriel, how often do you open out of the small blind? Fifty percent of the time? Probably only two out of four, maybe three out of six, but I'm definitely gonna three bet this here. Um, if it were, if it were full seventy-five cents, I would normally bet three bet to two twenty-five, so. We'll throw that out. Now, most likely he's folding, he's out of position. It was just a steal, uh. Which happened, but at the same time, just because he's likely folding and I have a great hand, doesn't mean I just want to call. I would much rather putting the extra money, have him call, uh, with the ace, king or ace, queen, get some value pre flop and if he hits his over pair, so be it, he hits it. But I'm not gonna let him see a free random ace, a king or a queen or even a jack hit an over pair to my tens, uh, and play that passively. No, not gonna work.
I like that reasoning.
That's a small, I wonder if you realized he was in already. That's a small isolation raise right here. Pocket nines versus ace, king. So this guy cash. Pre flop, get it in. Forty big blinds with nine, nine.
That's the kind of thing a lot of those short stackers do. They'll get it in with any pair, hoping that you fold and if you do just have ace, king or ace, queen. Uh, and then call that small forty big blind stack, um, you know, they hope to double up.
Gonna do it. Three, four off.
And their hand holds.
I don't know, three percent hand, bottom four percent hand, something like that. Not worth, uh, not worth stealing. I'd rather just fold it, let them think I'm super tight and on the button, which I am pretty tight when it comes to stealing. Now, two players sitting out right here. Parker, which is a lag, which I'm glad with him leaving. Why did he leave? Jebriel, Jebriel, I got position on him on two different tables. Let's see who comes in here. Did he leave because the fish was gone? Maybe. Think Parker might have been on this table, might have been.
See, that's a good thing to notice. If certain players get up and leave as soon as the fish at the table leaves, you know that they're paying attention and their table selecting accurately. Um. A lot of these players, they seem to play no matter who's at the table, like you saw that one table, I got there, four regs, two of them that are good regs with position on me. I just bounced. It wasn't worth, it wasn't worth staying in, uh, at that table, but, uh, some players, like, like I just said, um, with Parker. He might be just really table selecting well and paying attention to his tables. I've seen him come to tables where I am at, um, with position on me. Uh. But I imagine maybe if I have position on him, he might not be playing with, with me so much.
Yeah, I think so. He left as well. We've got this guy. Now, he doesn't like to fold to steals, but I do have the ace. Jebriel, ace, jack offsuit, just not happy with that hand. Don't want to call it. I could three bet it. That's a three bet or fold hand right there. Three bet bluff or fold. Three bet out of the big blind nine percent of the time. Oh, man, now I got another reg with position on me.
So, one thing is, as we're just about to wrap this video up here, when it comes to my tick sheets, when I have it on the screen, when I'm recording game tape for you all to watch. I often don't use it, like you can see, I'm not filling out that tick sheet that much, but when I, when I'm normally doing it, I have a piece of paper in front of me. With my tick sheet and a pen in hand. When I'm holding a pen, I'm more likely, you know, I can use a pen and a mouse at the same time. When I'm holding the pen in hand, I'm more likely to be making my ticks. I've seen my tick sheets have like upwards of a hundred or more ticks on them. Because I'm physically doing it in front of me and it's on the keyboard in front of me or on the desk in front of my keyboard. Um, so I think from now on, I'll be using my tick sheets even for game tape. I'll be using it by hand because I do a better job of keeping track of it at that time. Uh, and with tick sheets, it's not like I'm looking for some magical number or some magical ratio of passive to aggressive plays. I'm just looking to constantly be thinking about, am I being passive? Am I being aggressive? And the reason for that is, I know from looking at my hands, when I'm passive, I'm losing a lot of pots, I'm losing money, my win rate is really low when I'm playing passively. When I'm aggressive, that's when I'm making more money. That's when I'm stealing a lot more pots. That's when I'm getting more value out of my opponents. Um, and the double barrels are more successful. Well. You can't call double barrels and be successful. I guess you can win when you're calling, but you know, double barrels are successful when I'm more aggressive on average, you know? Um. Uh, well, when I'm using selective aggression and doing it smartly, uh, you know, make some good double barrels there. But yeah, from now on, I'll be doing the game tape that are the tick sheets physically in front of me and then maybe I'll hold it up for you to show you what I've been marking that kind of a thing. Let's see this final hand right here because I'm in the big blind right here.
Like I said before about the ace, king. I ain't gonna fold it. Don't want to get it in pre. It is just an ace and a king after all, you know? Decided to take a look at some carbon action to see what's going on because King Cook is a reg, uh, because these tables are just full of lags and rags. It's not great money, they, it's not a great money making situation, um, because they're gonna be using so much aggression against me. It's really, it's not profitable to just out aggress your opponents, you know, when everybody's building pots and then you're all. Basically rag or decent or good players, you're kind of just giving money to the rake. You know, you need the fish in the game. That's who you want to be making money off of, off of, so. Um, uh, carbon often, no, I'm gonna fold, carbon often has, let's see, fold forty-four percent of the time on a ten, deuce, five. It's a pretty tough board to hit right there for a calling range. Yeah, couple of hearts. If you have one heart, especially if it's an ace of hearts or king of hearts, you might be staying in just one or two streets right there. Um. Check call oftentimes folding out of position, fold to C bet only thirty-three percent of the time, so you just do not like to fold. So I don't want to make it half pot, don't want to make it two twenty-nine. Uh, when you, you don't fold the flop and you don't fold the turn, what are you folding out of position only on the turn twenty-five percent of time? You just don't like to fold in general, so we're not gonna do it. I can expect Moose Gills to have just a random ten right here. Hmm, ace, deuce even, even a worse pair. I wonder if he would have folded the turn. He probably would have folded the turn if I would have, uh, bombed it or double barreled it. Sixty-three, not gonna do anything. So right there on that hand, I was aggressive twice and then I checked once and then.
So that was a mistake right there. Um, I know by looking at his stats, he only folds forty-one and twenty-five percent of the time versus C bets. So he doesn't like to fold in general. He stays in with a lot of his range, uh, versus C bets. So if I'm gonna throw out that first C bet, I've got to throw out the double in that instance, um, because I need to put the pressure on him. Because he calls with such a wide flop range, I can't really put much behind his call, so if I'm willing to throw out that flop C bet, I have to double barrel right there. By just being a one and done player, that falls right into his game. He wants me to be a one and done player. That's why he calls the flop so much. So against players who are very flop honest, let's say they fold seventy percent of the time, go ahead and be a one barrel-er with your bluffs, you know? Throw out the one barrel, uh, expect him to fold most of the time. If he calls, he likes his hand and he's not giving up on the turn, most likely. So, but conversely, against guys who do not fold to C bets on the flop, you have to double barrel, um, because. He's staying in with so much crap on the flop, he might be staying in just to, just to spite you, just to wait for your passivity to take it away in the future. So you've got to do that double, uh, the double barrel versus players who don't. Or, uh, like I said, you just don't C bet in the first place. If you're not willing to double barrel versus the calling stations, uh, don't do the single barrel. Definitely. So that's a mistake made right there. So for an action step. See above, definitely. Alrighty, well, that's it for the day. We've been going a little over an hour, so thank you very much. The rest of this video, so you can see we've gotten through twenty-eight minutes. It's, uh, there's thirty-eight minutes left in this video. I'm gonna put it up on YouTube in the email today. I will send out a, um, a link to the video if you want to continue watching and, uh, you know, it's up to you. I would recommend continuing watching because I do pull off one or two four bet bluffs as well as I, if I remember right, I get some good value. This table has some really interesting stuff happen with a guy that is just being super aggressive and I end up, uh. Uh, I end up, I think doubling up on this table versus the player that was, uh, over here. See if we can't see the table real quick. Come on, I bring it over at one point. Ah, whatever. The player over in this seat, um, over here on this table is really loose aggressive and I'm able to take advantage of the way he's playing. Alrighty, well, thank you very much, everybody, for attending today's study session and you'll be seeing an email from me later on. Take care.